Good evening. The February 24th meeting of the Milltown Borough Council will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Here.
Councilman Dixon?
Here.
Councilman Lagotti?
Here.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Here.
Councilman Peretti?
Here.
Councilman Zambrana?
Here.
Mayor, we have six present.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of the holding this regular business meeting of the Borough Council was provided by the adoption of a resolution and the posting, filing, and forwarding of a copy of the same to the official newspapers, Home News Tribune, and Starlerger Publishing Companies on January 9th, 2020. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda of scheduled matters has been completed.
Thank you. We will do items four and five in the regular meeting. So next on our list is items for discussion. We have miscellaneous engineering items. Mr. McFarlane.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. Just a few items. First on the list is the Wilson Avenue Phase Two project. You may remember this was a project to increase or improve drainage at the end of Wilson Avenue and also to final pave the roadway. And the bulk of the work was the paving and the storm drainage which went down from Wilson Avenue down to Janet Court. It was a constant icing dam that had been created for many years. And we're happy to report that the project's working well. We have presented in letter form to the mayor and council a letter which recommends a final closeout of the project for the work performed satisfactorily by JAD's Construction Company. And it's a net over reduction of approximately $48,000 from the bid price. The work is complete and folks are seem happy to have any complaints. Janet Court was repaired also where we ran the drainage. We were able to get the DOT to fund the concrete work and the paving to that extension where the storm service done. So we're happy to report that the project's complete and we'll be presenting the final closeout changeover which is a reduction in the contract. Second on our list tonight is to talk to you about the West Foch Department Transportation Fund. We had a meeting with the Borough Administrator last week. As you may remember, we on behalf of the boroughs applied for grant funds to Department Transportation for work in the Foch Avenue area of the properties. This is if you're heading down Main Street towards Ryder's Lane. On your right-hand side, Foch goes down the hill. There's Hague and Patane which is a series of roads in that area. And the funding was put in for all three roads. Obviously, the funding request was over a million dollars. You got approximately $500,000. So our recommendation is that you concentrate on doing Foch. It's about right within your grant amount and that you try to stay within that funding. I think that's what the direction from the administrator is. We thought we'd talk about it tonight and make sure you're all aware of it. The funding from Trenton was just not high enough to do the all three roads. But at least you can go through and address the roadway at Foch. Now, in addition to Foch, there's a need to repair some trenches. Sewer laterals have settled. We believe there may be a problem with the senators who remain. Obviously, Trenton doesn't fund those on the road project, but that'd have to be funded through your sewer utility or some other funding. I believe the Borough Administrator has some ideas to how to fund that part of it. So with those two funding sources together, it appears we can do all of Foch and complete the sewer problem at the same time. So we'll keep you posted on that as time goes on. And last on our list is the Public Works Project. Basically, they're installing brick payers. The bulk of the site work has been completed. That's really all that's happening over there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to know, do we have a date? I know that it had possibly changed when the Department of Public Works firehouse complex will be completed.
Well, we're hearing sometime in March, okay? The building work, obviously, we're not involved day to day on the site work, as I said, basically, we're simply going to brick paper work.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is comments from the audience. If any member of the public wishes to speak on the items listed on the agenda meeting, please step forward to say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to the agenda meeting. Seeing none, we'll move on for adjournment. I'll ask the council for a motion to adjourn the agenda meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Council President Farkas, second by Councilwoman Lagotti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So let's just, I say we just move right ahead, okay? Move right along into the business here. So I'll use my camera again. The February 24th meeting of the Milltown Borough Council will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Here.
Councilman Dixon?
Here.
Councilman Lagotti?
Here.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Here.
Councilman Peretti?
Here.
Councilman Zambrana?
Here.
Mayor, we have six present.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of the holding this regular business meeting of the Borough Council was provided by the adoption of a resolution and the posting, filing, and forwarding of a copy of the same to the official borough newspapers, Home News Tribune, and Starlerger Publishing Companies on January 9th, 2020. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda of scheduled matters has been completed.
Thank you. Please rise for a moment of silence and I salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we have minutes. What is the council's pleasure for the minutes of the February 10th, 2020 meeting?
I move that the minutes be approved as typed.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Peretti, a second by Councilman Lagotti to accept the minutes as typed. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is comments from the audience. If any member of the public wishes to speak on the resolutions, please step forward and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to the resolutions listed on the agenda. Seeing none, we will go on to bills and claims. Will the clerk please read the bill resolution 20-066?
Authorizing the payments of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in a total amount of $3,27,579.92.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Make a motion that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lagotti, second by Councilwoman Zambrana. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. The resolution is adopted. Next, we have the reports of standing committees and an introduction of resolution. A consent resolution has been prepared to cover the resolutions listed on the agenda. If any member of the council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give the resolution number and it will be pulled from the consent resolution. Okay, there being no requests, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor of Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown County, Middlesex State, and New Jersey if the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
For the reading of this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. We have a motion by Councilwoman Lagotti, seconded by Councilwoman Newbauer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
Thank you. So moved. Next, we will move on to council reports. The first would be the Department of Finance Administration and Planning led by Phil Zambrana.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Department of, actually, the Finance Administration and Planning Committee met this past Thursday, February 20th, to start the process of looking at the 2020 budget. We are still waiting for a couple of departments to come in with their requests. There are still some figures that need to be firmed up. And when we have those available, which should be, I want to say, hopefully, within the next month or so, we'll have that discussion about drafting the final budget. The audit. The audit should be fully processed by February 27th. And hopefully, we will have a draft budget to be given to the borough on or around the first or second week of March. Once that budget is reviewed by or drafted by or looked at by the Finance and Planning Department, there'll be a presentation to the public before the budget's agreed on. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So that budget presentation will be before?
I'm sorry, I think Phil meant to say audit.
Audit.
The audit. It's not the budget.
No, it's not the budget, it's the audit.
So, but your budget presentation will be before the, or we're not doing a presentation on the audit, right?
Well, by statute.
So normally, we would have, we'd have a brief discussion about the audit. When it comes time for the budget, we will definitely have a presentation.
Okay, great.
PowerPoint and all.
Thanks, yes. Next, we have the Department of Public Safety. Nick Lagotti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Short reports today for subcommittees of mine. We had a well-attended senior center chat session meeting today. If you know of anybody that has a CDL license and is interested in being a bus driver for the seniors, we are in need of a bus driver. That would help them out, you know, tremendously. So if we can get that out there, I know we're advertising, but if anybody knows anyone, that would be great for us. The sooner the better. There were some other issues that we addressed. Jeanette was there as well as I was, Debbie Cuddy and the senior members. You know, certain upgrades to the building that we're going to try and get to them with grant money that we are, we're trying to get a hold of. You know, it doesn't come in fast enough for us, but we are promised some money to do some work on that. There is a Office of Emergency Management meeting scheduled for March 16th. The only other thing that I have, public safety-wise, is I am looking into, a few people have touched base with me. Jeanette was made aware of it today, of an issue that was going on, I guess, yesterday in the Target parking lot. Or that whole area there was, there was some issues with speeding cars and we don't know if it was a legal car show or if it was just something off the website that they just said, "Come here." You know, we have to get more information. My day didn't allow me to get, you know, fully appraised of everything, but I am looking into it. I'll have, you know, a full report at the next meeting about what happened on that, on last Sunday.
Great.
And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Department of Utilities, Randy Farkas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Both Planning Board and Ford Avenue Agency meetings in February were canceled, so there is nothing to report tonight.
Cool. Okay, next we have Department of Public Works and Recycling and a Newbauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, I didn't have, I don't have a report from the Department of Public Works tonight, but I do have just a brief report from a committee that I had with the Green Team. We had our meeting this past month. They are working currently to get the next certification for sustainable jersey. They have to basically follow up on some of the documentation for events and projects that they've already done. Other than that, there is nothing.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, Ron Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Board of Health meeting's been canceled for this month and the environmental meeting is not scheduled yet. It's coming up Thursday.
Okay.
Or Wednesday of this one. So there is no report tonight.
Okay. And last but not least, Department of Recreation, Councilman James Craig.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first, I'll have the council report provided by Director Julie Petrie. So for SAC, the March SAC fees have been billed. Parents receive an email reminding them of their March SAC payment. All payments are due by the 25th of each month. A late fee will incur automatically as of the 1st of the month due. We are still accepting applications for SAC adult program aids. You may go online to download and complete an application and return to the REC SAC office. For recreation, youth tennis and spring soccer registrations will be open online by March 6th. As a reminder, when registering for any recreation or SAC program, please enter your address as it appears on your utility bill or the system will not recognize it as a Milltown resident. Men's basketball is set to begin on Tuesday, February 25th. You are still able to go online and register today if you are interested. This has been extended from the previous date. Finally, reminder, all Milltown Albert Avenue summer rec and Milltown Borough pool applications for the 2020 summer season are due into the Recreation Department by March 31st. Please go online to fill it out. All applicants must be 15 years old by March 31st in order to apply. And that's the end of that report. We also had a Recreation Advisory Committee meeting this past Wednesday. Myself, Councilman Lagotti, and Director of Rec Julie Petrie were in attendance. Just had an overview of the department, mostly focusing on upcoming work for summer SAC pool, summer recreation, getting those programs stood up. And being very helpful to catch me up on the comings and goings of the department as I get kind of entrenched on what's going on there. So that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business to bring before the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business to bring before the council? It's a quiet group. All right, so I'll bring up new business. So I don't know whether this goes in comments or new business, but I did want to bring to the public's attention. I have paperwork. I am on the Board of the United Way and they have a lot of literature, as does the county, for the 2020 census, which is coming up in, starting in April. You will all be getting your information to be counted, which will mean that you can either go online or return a form to let the country know how many people you have in your household. It's extremely important from the county standpoint and from a town because we get funding from the federal government, we get grant money. There's a lot of benefit from having the proper count of people that live here. So I have the paperwork. We'll put some out here in Borough Hall. The library will be available if you want to go online and use one of their computers. They'll have somebody there to help you. But I also wanted to point out that there are several jobs within Middlesex County that if you're a student and you're looking for something part-time or you have a little extra time, you can make your own hours. And I think they said that it was like $22 or $23 an hour to do follow-up and be a census worker. So you can go on census.gov and find out that information and there'll be some of the paperwork that we will share here as well. So next on the agenda is audience comments. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. If a member of the public has questions they seek answers to, an appointment can be made with the appropriate office during your regular business hours or with a member of council during their allotted office meeting hours. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Any questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none. Actually, so I will have, let me just say, Mr. Weitzberg, we've talked about the PSENG before. So I just wanted to tell you that we had a meeting with the public affairs person and we made it clear that there should be a better communication if there's going to be ongoing work like there was up in your neighborhood to let people know what's going on. So this gentleman said if you have any concerns and you bring it to one of the governing body, we will immediately reach out to him so that people know what's going on. Okay? Next, let's see. Next, we have council comments. Is there anything further that anyone on the council would like to bring up at this time?
Madam Mayor, I just have two. On March 7th, there are two events going on simultaneously. The annual Fireman's Banquet is taking place and also Celebrity Bartender at the American Legion. Is it seven or six? Six o'clock. If you can come down, those are good places to donate your time and some of your money. And that's all I have.
Yeah, you will be at both of them, right?
Yes, we will. We will go to both.
Any other comments? All right, so I think that we have a motion for executive session?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to make, I would like to move that the resolution to enter into executive session be approved by council and that council will enter executive session immediately following the vacation of council chambers by the public. Council reserves the right to take action upon returning to the public session.
Second.
Oh, Gabriella, did you have to read the?
It's okay that way.
Okay. Okay.
It's okay that way.
So you've heard the reading? Oh, do we have to, can we do aye or do you need the roll call?
Roll call.
Okay, so please call the roll.
Council President Farkas?
Aye.
Councilman Dixon?
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Zambrana?
Aye.
Mayor, we have six ayes.
So moved. Council will enter executive session upon the vacation of council chambers.